Evening for the study session of the Lewisville City Council. It's Monday, November 7th. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and I'll call the meeting to order. And we will have a discussion tonight about accessory dwelling units. I think that we'll have a presentation from our planning director, Mr. Zakaro. When you're ready, take it away.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I have a presentation I'll go over this evening and then just open it up for Q and A and discussion. And this is set up as a study session this evening, just for informational purposes. I'm going to try to get my presentation up here. Okay. So, these are the general topics I thought I would go over, really just generally. I think most people know what an ADU is, but I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. And then, why do communities allow ADUs? So, this is kind of the higher level reasoning. What are some of the, you know, the big topics that they want to try to address or big policies that a community might want to try to address with ADUs? And then, when I say ADU policy considerations, those are the types of things you'll see in ordinances. So, these are the real specifics that a lot of the ordinances will address in ADU codes. And then, a little, there's more information in the packet. I'm not really going to dive into what other community ADU codes look like, but certainly we can look at those and answer any questions about that. So, an accessory dwelling unit is pretty much what it says it is. It's accessory to a principal dwelling. So, a principal dwelling is your, think of it as, these are usually on single-family homes. So, you have your typical home on a single-family lot. An ADU is typical accessory to that. So, it can be, it's a whole separate unit that usually has another family unit or other individuals living in the home, separate from those living in the principal unit. And it's often attached to that principal structure, or it can be detached as well. So, here's just kind of a cartoon drawing of different types of ADUs. You know, you'll often, sometimes you'll see ADUs in basements, or attics, or different floors of a home. Sometimes they're a converted garage, or detached from the house, or attached to the house. Here's some photos, so you can see what's probably a converted garage here, a couple of detached ADUs in someone's backyard. And then, oftentimes, you see garages with units on top as well. Or, there's a couple of pictures of basement conversions with separate units. In the city of Lewisville, we actually allow guest houses. We don't allow ADUs. We have a definition for what a guest house is, and you can't rent it separately, but you can have a sleeping area, you can even have a bathroom. You can't have cooking facilities in our guest houses. So, we actually see some structures around town, especially in Old Town, that look like this. It's pretty common that they're at the back of the lot with the long Old Town lots, oftentimes they're on top of garages, and they're guest suites. Not allowed to rent them separately, they don't have kitchen units. But, of course, as an ADU, all of these properties that are allowed as ADUs would have to have all of the facilities needed, so you'd have to have bathrooms and full kitchens in order to qualify as a separate dwelling.
Excuse me, Rob. I want to ask a point of clarification of the mayor. Is it okay if we be in conversation mode?
Yeah, so normally, we do our study sessions in the library, so it's a little more informal of a setting, so people feel free to ask questions and be a little bit more informal. It's sometimes hard when we're set up in this long range, but for council members, go ahead and ask informally, and for public who's attended, we don't normally take public comments at study sessions, but if we get to a point where there's a natural break, we can take a pause, and for folks that are here, we can do sign-up cards.
Thank you. Before we get farther into the presentation, I'm going to be interrupting you. I just want to let you know.
Sure. Okay, so, these are kind of the, kind of the bigger considerations, why a community might want to have ADUs in their community. They provide a different type of product, is one reason. Housing choice, you know, not everybody wants an apartment, not everybody wants a single-family house. It's just a different kind of size and type of housing. It can definitely contribute to affordable housing, both through market rate, or some communities have more formal programs to perhaps deed-restrict the housing and make sure it stays affordable to a certain level. You often see these also in kind of older, older communities. Like in Old Town, Lewisville, for example, they're very long lots, so, you know, having an ADU at the rear makes a little more sense, and there's not a lot of land to develop in some areas. So, it can be a reason if a community wants more housing, but there's not a lot of land for development. When you, when you actually look at some of the guides, some of the most popular online guides for ADUs and what ADUs are, the AARP has kind of the seminal 101 on ADUs, because they're promoting multi-generational housing and aging-in-place options and opportunities. So, in your packet, there was a link to the American Planning Association, resources on ADUs, and they link to the AARP, some of their information. So, there's some good information out there. It also provides income for a property owner, which helps them afford their property, whether they're aging in place, or just generally afford their property as well. So, these are kind of those code, I call it policy considerations, but these are common elements that you find in ADU codes. So, when a city does choose to allow ADUs, they'll regulate them in various ways to try to preserve community character, try to make sure that any externalities are addressed as well. So, that's what some of these are, at least the first six bullets. And the last two bullets are more of incentive programs that I wanted to talk about as well that could be considered. So, location and design. So, a city has to determine where. Where are we going to allow these? Again, it's usually in single-family neighborhoods. Some cities choose to allow them anywhere in the city, in any single-family neighborhood. Some of them limit it to certain neighborhoods that they feel are better suited for accessory dwelling units. So, the minimum lot size, I think in the communities that we reviewed, the biggest minimum lot size was 5,000 square feet. Just looking in Old Town, just as an example, we have a lot of lots that are less, there's a lot of 3,000-square-foot lots in Old Town. So, you know, if you picked a small lot size, you would, you know, as far as if somebody was concerned about crowding or character, if you pick a lot size, you can kind of help ensure that the lot or the neighborhood doesn't become overcrowded. ADU size limitation. So, almost all of these ordinances from other communities that we see will limit the size of the ADU. This usually is different if it's detached versus attached, or part of the structure. If it's part of the, it's part of the principal dwelling, oftentimes, they're allowed to be a little bit larger than if it's a detached accessory structure on the property. So, on the communities that we looked at, we saw ranges between 550 and 1,200 square feet, or 33% to 50% of the principal dwelling size. So, it's always, you know, 50% or lower typically of the dwelling size, the principal dwelling size. Okay, so, for design standards, most communities want to make sure, again, that if they're allowing new construction, whether it's an addition on an existing home, or it's a separate accessory unit, that there are some design standards to help protect community character. Oftentimes, there's different spacing and setbacks between accessory dwelling units. For example, you know, if you're allowing a detached accessory dwelling in your backyard, you may allow some other accessory structures that are closer to the property line, like just a storage shed maybe could be five feet from a property line, but your ADU has to be 10 feet back, just because it's going to be a more substantial structure. It's probably going to have windows and be occupied, so you can try to regulate the spacing and the setbacks of the ADUs. It's pretty universal, too, that the ADU is designed to be subordinate to the principal structure, so it's set back from the principal structure, whether it's detached or attached. The entrances are usually required to be subordinate, so they're on the side, or they're less noticeable than the principal, just to preserve character. Windows and privacy, landscape screening are often things that you see, as well as having a dedicated outdoor space. So, if you have a single-family lot, there's often, well, if you're going to have someone living there, they have to have their own outdoor space, too, as well.
This is a point where I have a question. So, and this is a really good picture. I know, because I've stayed, I'm in Lafayette, and we had worked on our house, they have a lot of them over there where they have built ADUs on top of garages. It appears that that's what that is there, which seems like a good solution. What, the question I have is about height. So, is, tell me how we would determine that's appropriate height or not?
Right. So, so, when it comes to height, I think we would have to look, if we wanted to allow these detached accessory units, you know, like in Old Town right now, we have a 20-foot height limit for detached accessory structures, which is less than what's allowed for a house. So, if we wanted to allow them, you might consider allowing more height, if you wanted to promote them above existing garages, or if you wanted to promote them above garages in general. You could probably have them still be shorter than a typical home. We'd have to look at, you know, how to design that.
But it's one of those details we would have to...
One of the details we'd have to...
All right. Thank you.
We'd have to work out, yeah. Yeah, and Lafayette's interesting, you know, when you look at the different communities, they do allow them in their Old Town, and they also allow separate ownership, which is really unique. They actually, as long as you have separate utilities, and it even looked like there was a mechanism for separate sale of those lots, which we would have to research a little bit more to understand how that works. But, you know, most communities, and I'll talk about this, owner occupancy is a big thing on those properties. So, density and spacing. So, oftentimes, you hear concerns, well, if we allow ADUs, every house in the neighborhood's going to have ADUs. We usually don't see that. There's usually a fair number of people who just don't want to deal with a second unit on their property, or they don't have the money to build a second, you know, they, somehow self-regulates generally, but if a community's concerned, they can have spacing requirements. So, the city of Boulder, for example, has, within a 300-foot radius, you can't have more than 20% of those lots having ADUs. So, the image on the right, this is from the city of Boulder, how they regulate. They have a lot of legal non-conforming dwelling units, so they're saying if you have a legal non-conforming unit, or a proposed new accessory unit, you can't have more than 20% in a 300-foot radius. I took just a 300-foot radius shot in Old Town. I think there's 49 properties caught in the radius, so if we did a 20%, you know, you maybe could have nine or 10 ADUs if we had a similar regulation in Old Town in that area. So, occupancy, like I mentioned, most ordinances will require that the owner live on their primary residence. Sometimes, they can live in the ADU instead of the principal dwelling, but it's very common to say, if you're going to have an ADU, you have to live there, that has to be your, your primary place of residence. This makes sure that, you know, the neighborhoods don't get overrun with investors, who are just buying up units and getting higher density and then renting. Helps make sure that the properties are well-maintained, as well, having the owner occupy either the ADU or the principal structure. There's usually an occupancy limit within the ADU itself. So, within Lewisville, we limit occupancy of the principal dwelling to our definition of family in the zoning code, or two unrelated individuals. Most of the ADU codes will limit number of occupants in the ADU. They don't actually necessarily say you could have a family of five. They say you can only have two or three occupants, and I think part of that is because these structures are typically smaller. You don't have to do it that way. You could allow a family in there and not worry about the number ultimately, but most of the codes do have a two- or three-person limit.
Okay. I got another question.
Sure.
So, one of the things we've seen in Lewisville with the homes that are burned, some of those lots have sold, they've sold to corporations, with the intention, I'm not exactly sure, but one of the intentions could be to build a home and rent it, and use that as a long-term investment. In that case, how do you determine occupancy? I mean, it's a corporation who owns it, and they're renting the principal residence. Does that mean they would not be able to rent the ADU?
Yes. So, most of the cities that do this would require some type of registration and deed restriction, so that it's really clear that if there isn't owner occupancy, and then the city could take enforcement action, either through violation of city code, or violation of the deed restriction. So, that's usually how that's addressed.
Okay. But, you know, one of the, one of the reasons for this is, you know, people like me, I'm getting older, so I might build an ADU, although my HOA probably never allow it, but you build an ADU and move into the ADU, and then I could rent out the home. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Yep. So, usually, you'll require off-street parking for ADUs. It's usually one space, is what most of the codes say, so there might be some incentives, and we'll talk about some incentives. That's an easy one for parking, because there's usually ample on-street parking, but it is a concern, and some people are really concerned about overcrowding of parking, especially in certain neighborhoods. So, one of the things is just to require at least one off-street space to help address that issue. So, utilities, so that's an interesting part of it, you know. Usually, here at the city, if you, you know, we have some houses that are allowed to have duplexes, or even two single-family homes, because their density allows, and they do have to have separate taps. Usually, when a city wants to allow ADUs, they actually require that the ADU and the principal structure have the same tap, they share the same tap. And I think part of this is to help ensure that there is single ownership, and that you really aren't having separate ownership. And you can actually, I know there's concern about, you know, people paying their fair share of tap fees as well, but, you know, we also regulate taps, tap size by the number of fixtures. So, if your combined fixture count between your home and your ADU is above a certain number, you're going to have to get a bigger tap anyways, and pay more, and account for your actual water use. So, by, you know, allowing a single tap, but really checking on fixture count combined between the units, is a way to ensure that adequate tap fees are being paid. So, like I said, most of the communities will require, you know, city of Boulder has a whole rental licensing requirement, but, you know, smaller cities will probably just have a registration and deed restriction requirement. So, that's where you could put a lot of these regulations, so that when the property sells, those new owners are well-aware of what the restrictions are. You'll, you know, you'll see that prohibition of selling the unit separately, subdivision of the lot, no short-term rental, could be a common item, which we don't allow short-term rentals in the city right now, and requiring the owner occupancy. So, I'm going to talk about affordable housing and historic preservation. In addition to ADUs, just providing a certain market rate type of affordable housing, which is relative, can be very relative, there could be some affordable housing incentives, where if somebody deed restricts the property, there could be incentives where the ADU could be larger, maybe they don't have to provide the parking, you know, that 20% limit within a radius, maybe you bump that up a little bit, so if they're in a neighborhood that's already saturated, but they're actually deed restricting it, maybe you can put a few more in that neighborhood. So, there's some incentives, and there's probably more, but this is just what we saw with the city of Boulder. Historic preservation, so this could be an opportunity for incentives for historic preservation as well. Certainly, you'd have design review. Anytime we have a landmarked property, any addition to that home, or even a detached accessory structure, has to meet design standards under our historic preservation code. But, outside of that, you know, if somebody was willing to landmark, this could be an interesting incentive to provide someone in exchange for landmarking, as you're allowed to have, you're allowed to have an ADU, or altogether, because we don't allow them now at all. Or, you could have some of the same incentives as affordable housing, where it could be a little bit larger, or you can, you know, more of them in the neighborhood and so forth. So, that's something that could be considered. Again, we, we did find, you know, several local ordinances from these communities. Several of them allow ADUs in any single-family zone district in the whole city. Some of them, it's limited to certain neighborhoods, and they all have really similar regulations. I'd say that the most interesting deviation is Lafayette, and, you know, how they allow separate taps, and, you know, separate ownership. You know, it's somewhat standardized what you see between communities, what they allow. So, that's just the table from the staff report with all that detail that we put in there. And then, that's really all we had to present. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You know, certainly, we aren't doing any, you know, any direction tonight, since it's a study session, but the city council, I just wanted to mention, you know, the city council will be doing their 2023 work planning, so if they did want to study this more, or consider an ordinance, you could discuss it as part of the work planning process. And I wanted to note, we are doing that affordable housing study as part of our comprehensive plan process next year, so this could be studied further with that effort as well.
Hey, Woods and Kyle, then Debbie.
Thanks, Mayor. Directors Zakaro, I have a question, quick question for you. I know that one of the policy goals that we sort of entered into this conversation with was increasing affordable housing in Lewisville. And I'm, you know, it's interesting, I really appreciate the fact that you all have gone out and done a survey, more or less, or you understand at least what the code is in various other surrounding communities. And so, you know, one of the things that I'm interested in is, it sounds, you know, obviously, these are smaller units, so by that, you know, the nature of that, they're, you know, hopefully more affordable, because it's smaller, right? But, I also wonder if they have any real, we also have other smaller units in Lewisville, right? We have apartment buildings, and we have townhomes and things, not many, but we do. And so, I wonder if they have, actually, having them in your community actually moves the market in any, in any meaningful way, or if they just sell at sort of market rate and are more affordable, because they're just small?
Yeah, so I think that when it comes to affordable housing in a community, you know, ADUs are not going to be the solution...
Right.
...to affordable housing. They're going to be one of, you know, hopefully, many solutions that a community is looking at to address affordable housing. And I think you're right. I think that, you know, when, in a market like Boulder County that we're in, you know, relatively, they could be relatively expensive. So, I wouldn't suggest that they're, you know, these are intended to, you know, solve a major issue of affordable housing. I think it provides some level, provides one strategy. And so, there will be, I think, for a lot of people, it's not, they're not going to be moving there, because it's affordable. They're going to be moving there for different reasons, for the people occupying it. They might be aging in place, they might be students going to CU, can afford a lot of different things. I also think the other, the flip side of affordability is the person who's, who's lived in that house for maybe 20 or 30 years, and they're retired, and having extra rental income allows them to pay their property tax and stay where they're at. So, that's an important part of it, too.
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting, I mean, I'm just, I'm struggling with it, because, you know, I'm, I'm a big believer that the market pays what it pays, and that it doesn't seem like if we were to adopt something similar to one of these other communities, that it would really dramatically increase the supply. And I'm not a big believer that Lewisville in and of itself is big enough to sway the market in terms of supply anyway, and that means that we don't have that big of an impact over prices in general. So, I'm just, you know, it seems like a, it may be appropriate and helpful in some categories, but in terms of actually increasing units that might be available to people who are at 60% of AMI, well, I don't, I don't know. I would think that in, as we go down this road, if we're, if this is something that the council wants to look at in the future, especially for our, you know, I would really want to know more about kind of the economics of how all this plays out, and how they affect home prices and, and, you know, residential prices. So, you know, I think it's, it's something to consider, just, it does not seem like it's going to have a huge impact, one way or the other.
I just wanted to add to that, that what I've seen some communities do is with a deed restriction, you could get to a point of requiring a 60% AMI-type rental, or 80% type AMI rental, but to get there, in today's market, we would probably need to invest in that somehow, where reduced building permit fees equals requirement for a deed restriction equals some controls there, something to that effect. So, a little bit of investment from the city might get to a scenario where we could have a tool to do something similar to that.
I'd be very interested in those types of tools, because it does seem like when we have, when we talk about larger developments, and we talk about the 12% affordable housing requirement that we have, you know, that seems like a logical thing. It seems harder when you've got one unit on one property to say like, oh, yeah, 12% of this unit, well, you can't split a unit, right? So, how do you make that more affordable for someone who's, you know, lower income?
Yeah. You know, and I would just say to, how do you move the needle on the economics, and we'll definitely explore that, especially when we do the affordable housing study, because that's going to be a more, a broad strategy, is that, you know, if the city wants to set some target of affordable housing, and just number of housing units in the future, you know, I'm just going to make up a number of like 500, like if the city says, we want 500 units in the next 10 years, and we want 20% of those to be affordable, not all of those are going to be the same product. So, you might say, of those 500, we want 100 of those to be ADUs, and we want 300 to be apartments, and 100 to be single-family. So, you, you have to kind of look at it, and that probably needs to be regional, too, in addition to just the city.
Thanks. I think, yeah, one comment, I think, yeah, what I understand, I moved to San Francisco when I was young, and affordable housing is an interesting definition of like, the city of, like, the only thing I could afford was a very, very, very small place for, you know, my partner and I to live in, but we could afford to live in San Francisco, like in the lower height, because we were willing to live in 500 square feet. But, it was still, like, the price per square foot was obnoxious, but having almost no income we could afford to live in the city of San Francisco. So, I think part of it is not that it is affordable in and of itself, like, square-footage-wise, but that someone who's not making a lot of money can choose to live in a very small space for a lot of money per foot, but it's actually not that much of their, of their total income. And there's these weird, and that, that wouldn't, you know, qualify as capital A affordable housing, but, but providing these different products. So, I think ADUs are one of those products that, yeah, they're usually smaller, they usually don't have all the amenities, you're sharing a space with someone else, there's some loss of value in that you don't have your, you know, anonymity there. You're sharing a backyard, you're sharing driveway, whatever. So, you're losing all these creature comforts that we come to expect as Americans, that like, I have my own space, but it's less expensive, and you can have someone living in there. So, I think that it's complicated, and I appreciate you presenting a lot of those different things. I'm curious if you have any information on the quirkiness of Lafayette, and whether that's, what maybe some of the concepts are behind it, and if those concepts, if you know those concepts, sorry to put you on the spot, if they're successful over time or not, part of my brain says, oh, well, that's really cool, that instead of just renting the garage, they can own the garage, and then selling seems really awkward, like, well, selling my house, but I don't own the garage anymore, so you just get this part, and the garage still belongs to, you know, that family. So, I can see the awkwardness of it, but also see the value in letting them own that appreciation and actually own that space, but I don't know how it's working in practice.
Yeah, that's a great question, and yes, we, I think, a really good follow-up is to see how many of these units actually exist in all the, we didn't get to that point, but with Lafayette and all these communities that have had this in place for a few years, actually see how many units they have in different neighborhoods, and how many total. Unfortunately, we don't have that information. I do know when you do have multiple units on a single property, you can typically condo-plat it, so you'd have to have some agreement for either, you know, somebody to maintain the property between the two owners, and then you can own basically the airspace, or at least airspace, of one of the units, and that's probably a way to address the... And that's probably a way to, uh, uh, address the ownership issue through some, you know, deed restriction on who maintains the underlying property and then having a condo plat.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I've got a couple of questions or comments, too. First, you mentioned that we already allow guest cottages. So that has everything except a functioning stove, essentially. So would those rental, the guest cottages be allowed to then add a stove and be an ADU? That they could then rent out?
So in addition to not allowing the cooking facilities, we just don't allow them to have a separate occupants outside of the family. They, they're truly meant to only be for guests. You can't rent them separately. So if we were to, you know, if the city was to adopt an ADU ordinance, yeah, a lot of people probably have the bones in place and they could just finish out their cooking facility and they would already have, you know, they probably have 95% of an ADU already built. There's a few properties like that because of our guest house allowance.
Okay. And then, uh, we already have an ordinance in the city that restricts to, no more than two unrelated people in a rental unit or I guess in a house even.
It's in any dwelling, yeah.
And so that wouldn't change. So it would be two in the, in the ADU and two in the primary residence. Is that right?
If we keep the ordinance the way it is, that's what would be allowed under our codes, yes.
Okay. Um, and then you said that there is a way to, um, kind of give incentives without, without charging for any, no cash from the city in order to allow them to be, uh, affordable. So charging for a percent of ADI or, or AMI, sorry. And so if, if we can limit, if we can limit the amount that someone is allowed to charge for a unit and give them incentives in order to do that, that would be an encouragement, I guess, to make them affordable. But then would that be for, I think we probably do it permanently or for it, for a time period, you know, 10, 15 years or something like that?
Yeah, I think that when you start doing the deed restriction, you have to enforce the deed restriction for, so you have to income qualify. So you have to kind of create a program around that. So with our inclusionary housing ordinance, we're actually still figuring that out with our regional partners.
Okay.
Is, um, you know, once you, you know, some of the bigger cities that have housing authorities already do this and they administer the deed restriction on income and they qualify. So if we were to do that, we'd have to figure out how to manage that aspect of it.
Okay, all right. Um, and then I'm, I'm, I guess I'm in favor of, uh, of doing something like this in related to aging in place. First, for the convenience of having, you know, you could hire a caregiver and have them live in your basement or whatever. Or you could move into the ADU and rent out your larger residence. And then you could have the income to age in place in your home and you wouldn't, you would have the money to, to stay where you were. And then the other thing I'm questioning about is what changes these things would carry over on the sale of the property? So someone puts in an ADU and they follow all the regulations and they do it age restricted or they do it income restricted or whatever. And then they sell the property. What happens then?
Right. So, uh, for example, if someone, if you had the owner occupancy requirement and somebody built an ADU and you were occupying it and you sold it to someone, um, and they were not intending to own or occupy it, they would lose their certificate of occupancy for that second unit. It would physically exist there, but they wouldn't have a legal right to rent it. So that's, you know, there has to be enforcement on that in order for that to work, but that's the way it would work.
And we wouldn't allow short-term rentals. So no, you know, B and Bs or anything going on there?
Yeah, I think a lot of cities choose not to allow, I mean, I think that's a policy consideration for the city ultimately. If they want to allow short-term rentals, um, but I think a lot of cities say, no, if we're going to allow this, we don't want to allow that because that changes, that could have some real impacts on the character of the neighborhood. Having people coming in and out on a weekly basis, a lot of neighborhoods don't like that. That's why they don't like the short-term rental generally, whether it's in an ADU or not.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you. It's a great report, by the way. Very nice.
Thank you, Mayor. Director, thank you very much for the, the presentation. Of course, these always bring up a lot of questions and, and clarification. I'm surprised my colleague, Council Brown, didn't say purposeful housing because that's kind of what he was getting at. And I, I have some of the same perspective that he does. We do this because it serves a purpose. Um, and I'm still trying to figure out what that purpose is. And what, one of the things you provided in the staff report and then it was too, too hard to read in the presentation was that, that summary table, a lot of really fabulous information. And I'm going to highlight, I can pick and choose from, you know, various cities, things that I'd like. The couple of questions I had was, how many do they have? I mean, you, I think you mentioned that. And what's been the growth over that period of time? You know, if, um, you know, I know that there's, uh, at least in my experience, it seems like a lot of these have been built in Lafayette. But I don't, I don't really know what the numbers are and, um, but I really don't like the idea of, of, um, selling these. You know, creating a lot of complication on our part and then who owns what. I mean, I know, I know you can own the airspace above a garage. It's like any other condo, but, um, you know, I don't want to do something that creates a lot of administrative burden. And, you know, if we have to be managing all this, I want it to be as straightforward as possible. One of the things, if, um, if you don't mind bringing it back up, is you had that map of Old Town and you had a circle and we were talking about within that concentric circle. And I think you were using 300 feet as an example. That, that, that was, that's a really good illustration. So when we start talking about, um, the, if we wanted to do this in such a way where it was purposeful housing, that it was some percent of AMI, you know, with the goal, you know, this is all speculative, but with a goal, we believe that it'll have some impact on our affordable housing goal of, of 12%. Looking at that, the, the graphic on the right there, um, you know, you're showing this is how many you can have in this area. Could it be a possibility, and I, I really want an honest answer on this, that we would say, all right, if you build an, an EDU and you're going to rent that at 60% of AMI, then we, in that concentric circle, we would allow X number of those in there. So you're shaking your head. I guess I was clear about what I'm asking. But is that a, would that be a significant administrative burden? Because somehow we're going to have to figure out, I mean, because these can overlap and everything else. But if we could add, for example, five EDUs, 60% AMI in that circle and replicate that in other places, that might have a potential, um, at least of, of addressing some of our affordable housing.
It would definitely have to be administered. I mean, I think our inclusionary house, like, that's what we're finding. Like if, I think if the city wants to do significant affordable housing, especially from a regulated standpoint, where you're, where there are income qualifications, it will require, um, administration. And I think what we're working on now is, you know, because we, we don't have a big enough program. We're working on how we can partner with surrounding jurisdictions on administration through an IGA or something like that, right? So that they, the people who already know how to do it and we could, you know, um, you know, probably pay them to administer for us. At some point, we might have in-house administration, but it would require significant administration. It wouldn't be full-time, I don't think, but maybe in the future, if we had a, a much bigger portfolio, there's a couple of options. One is we somehow, you know, count on the housing authority to administer it on our behalf. So that's a possibility.
The county, county housing?
The county housing authority, which again, they don't have programs for this right now. Um, and that's why we're looking at, you know, different ways to partner with other regional organizations that do this.
But aren't they income qualifying for the affordable housing that's currently in the city?
Right. I think it's, without getting too specific about, you know, them and what they do now or what they might do in the future. I think it's, you know, it would be a great partnership if they were doing it in the future on our behalf because they are our housing authority. But I think everybody's working really cooperatively in the region right now on how to, it solve this administrative issue because a lot of cities have new initiatives, you know, Superior and, and US. For example, you know, we have these new inclusionary, you know, areas looking at what, um, different things to do. And so we're looking at how we could group together because none of us probably have the demand for a full-time administrator.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's why I brought that up. It's like, you know, I can sit up here in the dais and be really creative and come up with things that I think made a lot, a lot of sense. And, you know, then you're going to go back to your office and go, great, I need two more FTE. And, and we're going to build six of these a year, you know, and, and it has to be, you know, has to be a balance. But, you know, when we, uh, if we approve this for a work plan for next year, you know, I, I, I think there has to be some financial incentives. There needs to be incentives on, you know, I was just making one up about the circle.
There could be a registration fee that maybe helps pay for that as well.
Right. But anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your candor on that.
Councilmember Lee. Thanks. Um, hopefully my signal will hold here. There are a variety of different purposes that you've indicated and we've talked a little bit about underlying, uh, EDU use in, in different areas. And I was looking a little bit at the, at the ordinances that you provided and kind of when different communities, uh, added these sections were, you know, to the extent that it's discernible from the ordinance number or anything like that. And it would be interesting to see, I think, what was motivating the various councils or town boards to enact these and, and what they found as a matter of, uh, empirical results, what they, what, whether any of the purposes was served or which, which were served more than others. I mean, I'm, uh, I would agree with a, with a, a number of council members tonight who said that, you know, when you do an, an accessory dwelling unit, you know, unless you really have, set forth a, a method of making it part of your affordable housing, um, stock, it's just not likely to happen because you're likely to try to, or the people who own these are, are likely to either have a specific purpose in mind for family members, something like that, or to, to rent it out at a market rate. So, um, you know, there's a limitation on that. I know also, uh, from some of the materials that have been provided that there, you know, there are ways that we could, could help out along and you've talked a bit about those tonight. I guess what I'm interested in is have any of the communities that have done ADUs, moved the needle on affordable housing goals that they set for these programs when they implemented them? Do you know?
No, I, I don't know. You know, I think it'd be interesting to try to track this over time as a community and set targets and measurables and, you know, performance indicators of what we're trying to achieve. And we'd have to maybe put something together. I, we could certainly look and see what other communities have done as far as trying to track, um, you know, if they've met their policy goals. You know, we didn't have that conversation with any communities, but that's an interesting question and potential follow-up that we could work on.
Well, and I, I recognize that maybe the question's a little rhetorical because we didn't really ask you to do a huge amount of research here. And I really am impressed with the materials that you're able to provide and pull together. I, I wonder if anybody on council actually has, has some knowledge of, um, what the actual effects have been when these have, um, you know, when ADUs have been allowed in communities, whether, uh, other folks have, have heard anecdotes or whatnot about, uh, other communities, what they've, what they've found, either on affordability or, you know, whatever. You can, you can put something in place and have 10 different rationale for it. But, you know, in point of fact, something comes out the other end and it's good to, to see that, as you say. But does anybody else on council, um, have any information relating to the experiences of those other communities that they've heard about?
I, I do have some professional experience, um, with that. I mean, of, of course, again, um, people are, there's a, a, a lack of, if you go online right now, there's pretty much, you, you can't rent anything for less than a thousand dollars in Boulder County. Like it's not, it doesn't exist. So it's, it's a really, uh, small market. If you want something 3,000, 4,000, $5,000 a month, there are currently 500 properties available in the city of Boulder at $3,000 or more per month. Right now, if you go online, 500 properties available for more than $3,000 a month. But there's not a property available under a thousand dollars a month. So if you want to pay 800 bucks a month in Louisville somewhere, there is not an option. So if you create an EDU that's 600 square feet and you charge 995, you will be the only place in all of Boulder County that is providing housing at under a thousand dollars a month. It's a 600 square foot EDU. It's not a mansion, but that, that isn't available in the market right now. Just from a, from a market standpoint, that isn't available in Boulder County currently. There, and, and there are ADUs available in other places. Again, Boulder's very expensive. Louisville's a little less. Lafayette's a little less. As you get farther east, it's a little less. But, um, no, if I, I, I have a garage in-law suite without a cooking area. It's a guest house. And I joke with my employees about staying there. Like, oh my God, I'd rent your place for 12, 15 months, you know, heartbeat to be in that place downtown in Louisville. Wonderful little spot. I, I do that for sure. Um, and that's without, you know, a kitchen, a kitchen, uh, capability in that space. So there's certainly a market for it, um, whether we, you know, really have a huge impact on what we do. But again, it's, it's a, it's a part of a larger process. I mean, there are lots of different, um, approaches, but, but having low cost. And again, I, I try to make that point is it's not low cost per square foot. It's actually pretty expensive per square foot. But, you know, that's why, that's why five people live in a four-bedroom house so they can each pay 600 bucks. And, and we don't allow that in Louisville. We don't allow five people to live in one home and share that cost because that's our, that's our rule, right? But that's, that's how you bring the cost down is saying, we're willing to be in a small place or have each, each of us in a small space within the home. So I think there's a market for it.
Any members of the public care to comment? We don't normally take, um, public comment during study sessions, but I see there were some folks that wanted to make a couple of brief comments. Go ahead. You'll come up to the podium, you'll have to tell us your name and you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us.
I had a prepared statement to make, but I think I'm going to abbreviate that so that I can express my own experience. I'm a resident of Louisville. Um, I was displaced from probably a not legal EDU. It didn't have a full cooking unit, but I had 1,400 square feet of space to call my own, which is one reason I, I moved to the area. When I was displaced because of, of the owner's elderly parents not being able to purchase a property in the area and, and needing to age in place, um, I had to face the rental market and my rent tripled. Right now, what, what I am paying for Right now, what, what I am paying for less space tripled from what I was paying in an ADU. I worked for a charter school. It, it makes, it makes life a whole lot different to expend 50% or more on, on your housing. And perhaps it doesn't look like a large scale, but for the lives of 10 family units, whether they're related or not, it makes all the difference to be able to have a reasonable quality of airspace, to, to live in a safe community and have access to the amazing benefits of, of living in 80027, whether it's here, Superior. ADUs seem to be something that are supported when higher-density units are not. There's support in the community, and just wanted to share my experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other council discussion on the topic or questions? I think Councilmember Lee had some follow-up questions.
No, that was really very helpful. I mean, and, and actually, I appreciate the community member, I didn't catch the name, but appreciate her sharing her story. And, and thanks, Councilmember Dickinson, for sharing that kind of information, too.
I have one more question, and that's on the HOA requirements. So if the city were to allow ADUs in any way, in any area, could an HOA still disallow them within their area?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Dickinson, and then if you guys can think of your questions and organize them in a block.
My last one wasn't a question, I was responding to someone else.
No, no, totally.
Got it. So my question about rental licenses, you kind of put a thing out there, it's like, bigger cities, you know, they have these systems. One of my concerns about anything we try to do here is we don't have the funds for it, we don't have the people for it. Administration is difficult, enforcement's impossible. But, you know, would it be helpful in administering some sort of ADU program and everything that goes along with it to have a rental license component that says, hey, if you have any rental unit in the city of Louisville, you have to pay X. If you want a short-term rental, it's Y, if you want an ADU, it's Z. But there's a cost to having a, you know, a, a space you rent. And then there's a process to make sure it's safe for those people, that it's kept up for those people. And there's, and there's then accounting also for how, what percentage of our community is rental, what percentage is not, what percentage is short-term and long-term, and kind of, you know, either helping people understand the accuracy of their fears, or the inaccuracy of their fears, of saying like, oh, actually, this is what's out there. But it's, it seems to me, when the fires came, we couldn't do anything as a city council on, you know, anything around rent control or the behavior of landowners and homeowners in the way they were renting their places. So we couldn't say, whoa, 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 don't increase your rents right now. We couldn't say, whoa, 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 don't kick people out right now. We couldn't do anything, and currently, we can't, from a statewide perspective. But if, if we were, if we were able to have our own municipal control over the rental market, if you will, the rental activity and rent controls and things like that, it would require, we would have to have some sort of rental license program to even understand what is a rental unit and what isn't. Otherwise, it's all just, you know, everybody acting on an honor system, right? And so, you know, again, manage a lot of homes in my business, and we happily fill out a rental license application in Boulder, and we don't fill out a rental license application in Louisville. We have hiccups and problems and issues with Boulder, and we don't have any of those with Louisville. But Boulder can then control what we're doing and how we're doing it, and Louisville cannot. And so it just seems like if we're going to do anything around ADUs, anything around rent control, anything around having any impact on affordable housing from a rental's perspective in our community, it has to start with knowing which properties are rentals, and having an app, like, not just a choose-two, but like, an absolutely, like, you must. And of course, you can't afford it without revenue, but the revenue comes from the licensing. Like, do, can we even do an ADU program without a licensure program?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of potential benefits to have a licensing program outside of just controlling ADUs, and you mentioned a lot of them. And I think, I mean, I think we could. I think we'd still want a registration and deed restriction process that would probably be short of a licensing requirement, where we were doing building inspections and whatever other standards we wanted to implement with the licensing requirement. So I think we could do it either way. Certainly, if the city wanted to do broader licensing, there could be a fee structure that could, again, help support staff to address licensing and AD regulations as well. So it just kind of broadens that, as well as, you know, being able to understand, you know, like you said, how, you know, what's happening in our community as far as the number of rentals and how they're being managed.
Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. I know that we've talked about that, and I really appreciate your comments and questions. Those are great. Director Zakaro, I just, a few things you said, I guess I, I am interested in understanding more about the staff interpretation, or I guess, like, diving in a bit deeper on your response, just because of previous interactions that we've had, or previous things that have happened in the city. So I guess one maybe question, maybe comment that I'll start with is on unrelated families. So from my perspective, we're not currently enforcing our city of Louisville ordinances on the number of related families because of federal law that's been enacted since our ordinance was put in place that talks about the number of unrelated families that can live in one home. So is it your impression that we're currently enforcing the Louisville law on the number of unrelated families that can live in one dwelling?
So I think it's the number of unrelated persons.
That's what I mean.
Right, yeah. And so we have, from time to time, recently, you know, had neighborhood complaints about how many people were living in certain homes, and have made contact with those property owners, and explained our ordinance, and asked for compliance. And we've received compliance in some cases.
Okay. I certainly know of cases that have been elevated to city councils' level of attention that we have not, like, we have a sober-living home, for example, that came into town where we're not enforcing the number of unrelated persons.
So that's, so they had to get a separate approval from the city? So I, to, to me, that's just a different category that falls under that federal law, and they did go through a process with the city to, we actually did building inspections, changed the occupancy of the home, and they received a special approval to operate those facilities.
Okay, so in certain circumstances, people can proceed with a process to get additional unrelated family members living together in certain circumstances?
Yes, when they qualify under different laws.
Just clarifying that.
Yes.
Great, that sounds fantastic. That's consistent with my understanding. And then another thing you talked about is renting a room in your home. So I don't believe anything in our code currently prohibits you from renting out a room in your home for over 30 days? As long as it's over 30 days?
Yes, you can rent, so, yeah. And so we actually have a provision in our code that allows renting of rooms, which is different than renting a separate unit.
I just wanted to clarify that, just because of some of the statements you made, I think that wasn't necessarily clear. So I just wanted to clarify that we're on the same page. You can rent a room?
You can rent a room in a, one room, one individual in one dwelling is the limitation within the city.
But everyone can do that right now, today.
Everyone can do that right now.
Excellent. Just making that clear to everyone listening. And then, you know, just from an enforcement standpoint, these, enforcement's hard for planning and zoning things, in my opinion. Maybe you think it's easy. But like, for example, city councils set policy and reaffirm policy that vacation rental by owners not allowed in, short-term rental's not allowed in our city. And yet, if you go to VRBO or Airbnb, you'll see units listed for rent, or, you know, I'll get complaints from neighbors about units for rent. So what is, what is the rate-limiting step right now from enforcing those types of things? And I can see those VRBO kinds of issues being the same kinds of issues people would bring up on ADUs. Not that it can't be done, I think it can be done very successfully, but if you don't have the program to support it, you know, you just get a lot of complaints, like we are on VRBO.
Yeah, we do receive VRBO complaints from time to time, at least within our department. You know, I think when, you know, like you said, enforcement can be challenging sometimes just because of resource limitations. So sometimes when there's code violations, you know, we base our enforcement activities based on, you know, how, you know, how, how much staffing we have, how much capacity we have, you know. So when we are aware of a violation, so there, a city can be really proactive, especially when it comes to VRBO. There's actually whole businesses out there that will monitor listings for your enforcement agency, and then you can take proactive. You know, but for us, when we become aware of them, and we have the capacity, we certainly follow up on those. I know I've worked to follow up on those. Again, it comes up a few times a year. When we, we know there's violations, we contact the property owner, we work with them. It's a lot of work, because we're not just out there giving summons, we're asking them for compliance and going through a whole procedure.
So from my perspective, I don't think we have a very successful enforcement program on VRBO right now. So, you know, moving forward with the ADU program, I would be asking what types of things the department needs to be more successful?
Sure.
Like, what do you need? Because I think a lot of the regulatory things that you laid out could make a successful program, but not if you don't enforce it, and not if you don't do anything about it. Then it will just, it won't accomplish the goals that you're purporting that it could accomplish, that I think it can with a good program. But if you just let it run, sort of, I don't know what the best descriptor is, I'll just stop there, then I just don't see it meeting the goals in the same way. So the types of questions I would be asking going forward is, you know, what are the gaps you have today that are keeping you from running what I would call a successful enforcement program on VRBO? And then what additional resources would you need to be able to run this program successfully? That's what I would be asking.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, every so often, and Rob knows this, I bet other council members do this, too. It sounds like, Mayor, you've, you've had this experience. You know, I, I usually ask how, how many, how many listings, people, how many complaints have been filed, what the census of the planning department, of how many, you know, listings there are. And Mayor, you may, may have actually more sort of current information, because I haven't actually gone on any services to, to find out. But the idea being, at some point, we may, I mean, this is a separate issue, maybe a separate issue, though related, I suppose, that we may want to do something more serious about regulating and enforcing the VRBO issue, because I know that there are people who ask me from time to time, when are we going to do that? And my sense has been up to now that it hasn't been enough of a problem for us to turn to it. But, I don't know, the mayor's comment makes me think, maybe I'm, maybe I'm underestimating that. Mayor, do you have a thought about that?
I, I just was trying to draw parallels between programs that I think take a similar amount of attention and focus, and maybe the ADU program I actually think would take more focus and attention to do successfully. So, you know, I just, it's not exactly the same, but we're sort of drawing the parallels to understand the gap in, I think all of our staff in planning and building safety are excellent, but, you know, we only have a limited amount of resources. So just like the planning director was saying, that, you know, he has to look and understand the resources and the priorities before he can just go enforce, you know. For example, I get complaints every time someone rides their horse on Davidson Mesa. That doesn't mean the police can make it up there every single time, because they might be responding to something that's a more urgent call. So I think the same thing happens in planning and building safety, where they have to triage to some extent as well. So I wasn't trying to necessarily draw that much attention to the VRBO conversation, although I think it's an interesting conversation, just more asking about the resource need, and then how we would measure success and ensure that we weren't just saying, this is how you would run a good program, and then implement a program, and then leave people without the follow-up and the follow-through and the care to show, that I think is really required to make it be a successful program. So that's all I meant to do.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm with you. I, I'm wondering whether, or maybe I'm, I'm just thinking that if, if and when we look into this, there may be, there may be room to, to, to throw the VRBO issue in there as well, at least from an enforcement standpoint. But I, I would absolutely agree, based on what I've heard and read here, and, and heard from other council members, that we, we want to, you know, if we did this, we'd, we'd want a pretty solid, robust enforcement program, so we do it right. Because you could really, it could really go sideways if you didn't do, if you didn't do that, I think.
Councilmember Brown?
Thanks. There are currently 24 listings on VRBO in the city of Louisville. Most of them are centered around downtown.
That doesn't, that doesn't include all the other websites. Councilmember Fahey, any closing comments for us?
I just have one more question, is that, is there any way for at least the ones that we would be income restricting, that we could partner with Boulder County, who manages our, our income-restricted properties now, and just extend this on as another portion of their responsibility? Or at least follow whatever program it is that, that they use?
Right.
Or also, now that I'm thinking about this for a moment, we used to have our own procedures before we gave it all to the county, so could we go back to whatever we used to do?
Right, potentially. And they do, they do income qualification for their portfolio of housing that they manage. But I don't think they have a program where there's separate ownership. They own everything that they manage.
Oh, right.
And so that's the difference. But other cities do manage, like, the city of Boulder manages deed-restricted properties. So they know how to do it, they have procedures in place. So there is a, a local community that we could either learn from, or maybe even partner with, you know, to help with that.
Great, thank you.
So we, we really have to, so we had a public comment period, and we have, all our emails are posted online, and we'll all be here after and would love to talk, to talk individually, but I try to give everybody the same period of time and opportunity to comment. But there's lots of ways to get ahold of us to make your suggestion, we'd love to hear it. Any other council questions or comments on this one? Councilmember Fahey closes out.
One more comment, and that's that I would like to somehow, when we discuss this as a possible addition to our city, that we partner it with our discussion on affordable housing. So it's, it's ADUs, it's affordable housing, and also our EDI issues, because it all kind of blends together. Even sustainability would be involved, because it would be a greener way of building.
Thank you for that great summary. All right, thank you so much, that is fantastic. Thank you, staff, for the presentation on this tonight. Any advanced agenda topics that folks need to add? So there's one topic around, that, that I was talking to City Clerk Muth about potentially adding at a future date around meeting attendance, the virtual option, our rules and residency. I just think a number of things have come up in the news, and locally both, that make it pertinent for us to get some outside input on a number of different things that have materialized on our council, and just talking about them, and figuring out what we want our rules to be, and then asking any questions we have about any existing circumstances. It's just an important thing to do in the spirit of transparency and just having the discussion, so we can lay it out and get any questions we have answered. Is that a discussion people are okay with having? It would be, basically be like meeting rules, again. Mayor Pratimalani?
Well, you know me, I always like to throw more on the agenda when we don't have any time. All, all jokes aside, you know, the, we, we have had questions from residents who lost their homes about serving on boards and commissions, and I don't know if our attorney has been able to address that or not, but there's probably other aspects of residency, given what's going on at the state level?
That one I will address, since we have an upcoming deadline for board and commission applications. applications. We have told everyone that as long as they're intending to rebuild and moving along the process to rebuild, they are still eligible to serve on boards and commissions. I understand that that's what we've been telling people, but I just think we may need to get some additional third-party help.
We do have that from the city attorney, that is allowed.
I still think we should ask the district attorney, but anyway, I think there's conversation to be had and just make sure that we're not putting people in a position that creates an issue.
So how are they making that declaration?
I've answered a number of questions to that effect. Anyone has a question, I've acted today as well, so anyone can talk to me, you know. We said the same thing about your voter registration, that if you are intending to rebuild, your voter registration can still be this address. So that would still be, as long as you're maintaining that as your permanent address and intend to return, that you would qualify.
So those people, excuse me for interrupting, but, so those people who put their lot up for sale?
They would no longer be eligible.
Where would they vote?
So I don't want to be accused of having a conversation that goes beyond agenda setting. So let's put this on a future agenda if we want to talk about it. This is exactly the kind of question that we can talk about if we agenda it.
As a point of clarification, I don't see this on our agenda tonight.
We always have this as a standing item on every agenda. So if you read our city charter and our meeting rules, nothing prohibits council members from agendaying a future agenda, even if you're not at a meeting. We can do it over email with the city clerk or any number of ways. So as long as we don't have discussion and we're agendaying a future meeting, we're okay to talk about it.
Right.
So are folks okay with adding this topic to an agenda? I think there's lots of questions. Looks like a lot of nodding. Councilmember Lee?
Is it okay to make, not an announcement, but just sort of a comment on the order of sort of council, a council comment?
As long as you don't yell at me next week, it's fine.
I'm not going to yell at you next week or this week or anytime.
Okay.
Don't worry, we'll take turns.
I just wanted to encourage whoever either sees this or might be left in the participant group, it looks like there's, to vote by the end of the day tomorrow. And I think probably we just kind of hit it on, or the clerk just hit it on the deadline. I think the deadline is the 11th, right, for boards and commissions?
It's November 10.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm glad I asked that. And just encourage people to apply, and that's really it.
Councilmember Dickinson, take it away. Take us home.
I just want to say that our community lost a really wonderful human being today, and I know that there will be hundreds, if not thousands, of people mourning the loss of that human, and I, for one, will be mourning that loss for sure. And I want everyone to know there are a lot of resources out there for everyone, those who are sad and those who are in a situation in which they're considering, you know, taking their own life, that there are resources there to make a better decision. And there's a lot of support from the community around you to, there's so many resources to seek out help before making an ultimate decision that will affect hundreds, if not thousands, of humans that love you.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. We are adjourned.